Lord, how grateful we are for your love and grace. And Lord, we thank you for the opportunities you give us. We ask you, Lord, to be with the council. Help us that we might do what you want and what's best for the city. Be with each and every one, even in Jesus' name we pray.
Right. Public request, at this time we didn't receive any money that wanted to sign up, speak to your public request and then move on to the old business. Consider new hiring grant for 2002 Chief Casey. We had, I think the last meeting asked to hold this off till we have full council. And I think Mr. Jerry is supposed to be coming, so if it's alright with y'all. Mr. Mark, what did I say? You're here, Jerry.
I'm here. You ever seen your moment, right?
Yes, that's where I am. What I was trying to get around to, if it's okay with y'all, we'll move that until later on in the agenda, if that's okay with everybody. Is that okay with everybody? Is this thing alright? And we'll see if Mark shows up. Alright, so let's move on to the second item there on the agenda. Under old business, consider reappointment of two park and recreation board positions. I think we have a sheet in our.
Tracy Slosson.
Tracy Slosson, who else? Tony McLean may have agreed to re-up.
I mean, we reappoint Tony McLean and Tracy Slosson.
Okay.
I'll take it.
Diane, make a motion. Carrie seconds. All in favor? Okay, and then the next item under old business, consider appointment, recommendation for park and recreation for unexpired terms. Hallwood is the recommendation.
I'll say mine.
Diane moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jerry seconds. Do we know Hallwood?
He's currently working with the county. He has a warrant, he's subscribed. And he's been given on the S and G.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Four, four, nine, yes. Okay. Under new business, we have our consent items, which are the financial statements, minutes from the 15th to 29th of January, municipal court report, and as well as police department's report. Do we have any questions concerning any of those? Okay, we have most of the consent, we accept them. I have a second.
Second.
Diane, seconds. All in favor? Four, four, nine, yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider request from Texas Department of Defense regarding a storage site for paving materials. And Mr. Kevin Harris was here from Texas Dock to address that. Would you like to?
Just for a second. Like I said, my name's Kevin Harris, I'm a Texas Dock Sherman, assistant area engineer. First of all, I'd like to give you all an overview of our project. We've got a 75 project coming up, just started latter part of April this year. It's a three-year project to rebuild 75 from 902 to Canaline. The ultimate section is going to be full concrete pavement, 96 foot wide with center median all the way through to Canaline. To build this project, we've got to remove all the old asphalt pavement on 75 along with the old concrete pavement. By the rule of Texas, we've got to retain this asphalt material as our possession of Texas Dock. One thing we're going to do with the material is to allocate it to the counties as a relief program for. There was a Senate bill passed in 97 that required Texas Dock to give aid to the counties for material to reimburse them to address their roads or fall park facilities and heavy levels if we can use them. We use this dirtball wrap, which is recycled asphalt pavement for this purpose, to allocate to the counties. We're going to generate a lot of revenues from this project. In fact, we're going to cover like four football fields, 20 foot deep, so we've got a lot of stories we need. We originally had a piece of property set up to lease, just south and west 75 by the auction placement, that got cut off. Our budget's getting a little tight, they disallowed the leasing of that property for the storage. Therefore, we are going to utilize all of our right away we've got on the project and are seeking some sites from the City of Howell and probably City of Howell State, for some of the sites close to the project. One thing this will do for us and y'all, or the cities, would be that we'd be able to leave some material at the sites for y'all to use at your own choice. Material, like I said, is recycled asphalt, it's going to be milled up asphalt, the county uses it quite often on the county roads, you can ply and roll in and chew with seal and it makes a pretty good solid road. Site we're looking at using, I talked to Stephen earlier, is on the West Frange Road, just north of 301, just to the ball fields over there. There's a little triangle spot in there from the Frange Road back to the ball fields. Now, there's not a whole lot of room there, but there is some room we're making use. We're going to try to utilize all of our sites on the right away first, if there are space. Hopefully, somebody, Jerry St. Gerald, the county will come get it and kind of relieve our stockpile signs, but in case of emergency or just can't find any room, we'd like requests to use exempt property. As to requirements of y'all, if y'all want us to self-finish the location, keep all the material contained, and then we'll leave some material there in the project for y'all to use for either the ball field, parking area, or the power which you should use material. Project will start in April of this year, it's a three-year project, so there'll be material generated a little bit each year in about four or five different stages. So, it might be a little entertaining, the rest of the possibly use the site as temporary sort of site.
Yeah, what he's talking about then, when you go down that road towards the big buildings lots, that property to the east, which is to your rivals, I don't think many people park there, do they?
Well, that's the majority of the parking because of.
I thought they parked up closer to the town.
Uh-uh, not with this age group because I've also parked there. I mean, it's probably, you remember where the court parties were last year? About the middle fence going east? You know, there's the two big posts for the gate that was there at one time, that's where the court body said, and that's where we encouraged them to park, is on that side, because we don't want them sitting up against the fence for headlights, these are the games and stuff like that. But if Texas Dock is going to fence it in, to put something.
Well, we, as I said, still have to do a short fence just to keep the stuff from migrating.
Right, right, and that would be a deterrent for, you know, kids not to complain of it.
Right, that's, I want y'all to consider all the options there, all the methods of it, but also, if we can use that site, give me seasons, if we can only use it from, you know, November through January, then maybe it's likely to go up there.
That would be a good point, too. We could have enough of the door, we could block out the hood area.
Right, right.
And not to build that road.
Right.
That's what I told him he was talking about.
Well, it'd be, the ball season is April to June. Well, I mean, they start practicing mid-March, and then the last game is usually first of June. And we don't hold any terms, very rarely, because of the parking. But yeah, if there's something that's around to further children, then.
Well, he's talking about the salesmen, you're talking about the black graphic.
It's a two-foot nylon mesh.
The water can go out of the.
Right, right.
But it would be something that they have to climb over, but it could be turned. Now, that can be placed along the ball field side, because there's going to be access from Frange Road into the site.
Right.
We talked, there's a couple of manholes over there that are abandoned.
They're dead. Well, it's just one, it's just one, it's dead and filled in with concrete.
I would say that one man that's closest to the fields, that's usually as far as the working goes. Yeah, because you, normally at this age group, there's not that many kids and parents that show up, it's mainly their parents and stuff like that, so, I mean, I don't think we've had more than, I'd say, what, 30, 40 cars at the maximum over there at one time.
You say there was not any parents with other kids, though. That fence is not going to deter anybody.
Well, I mean, it will, you know, if the parents are watching the kids.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, but.
Parents are deterred if they watch the kids.
More to be open.
People do not put fence up where kids are going to be kids.
Well, a nine-foot fence would determine a little more of the.
That'd be more of a challenge to.
But no, I mean, I don't.
Well, that's why, that's why I told him he didn't.
Actually, there's a possibility that we won't even need the site.
Right.
We're going to have 902, the southwest and southeast waters there, we're going to have the Canaline Road area, and I'm going to put that up there at Chalkoff Creek, which is why I'm aiming there. I'm trying to keep it as close to the end of the project as.
Kevin, you were mentioning specific dates. If we said between March and July, limiting that, how would that affect?
Well, like I said, what we're trying to do is try to get the counties, we're trying to get some material off the road, stockpiled, and then retrieved by counties as quick as possible. Bobby wants to keep, he wants the whole project to be clear of any rapping when we get through to the project, which is a three-year project. I think that's pretty pushing thing, because our district is allocating how much we can generate out of the year. We've got to get so much to the counties every year, but there's a cap on that. But we're going to be utilizing, I think, our district maintenance, they're going to be using Grayson County, Fannie County, Lamar, Delta, Hunt, they're all coming to get stuff because it's good material, it's very good material for county needs and city needs. It works great in alleyways, it works great for parking areas. We had talked very, very little about the big area where the football parks are. We've got a lot of land, it would make a great subbase for a parking area, but I don't want to put traffic through that residential area. This is a very close highway, so we're getting diggers. But there is the possibility of the kids out there playing on it, it'll be at least 30 foot off the Frange Road, and then whatever disney goal we request back, like I said, we could work on time, but I can't guarantee that it'll all be gone.
Right.
But we want to leave some there for y'all to have for the parking station. And this gives y'all an opportunity, like I said, we're allocated to mandate to get the counties only. Cities can't request from the county, but we're allowed to give back to cities in this program, but this way y'all can get some material out of the thing.
Have you guys got any other questions?
Well, sir, and when you chew this stuff up, I mean, it's going to be, the asphalt's going to be chewed up, you're going to chew up the concrete?
It's just going to be the asphalt, it's just going to be the asphalt pavement, the concrete itself is going to be stockpiled by the contractor and ground up, it uses as a subbase on the project.
It's not ground up very small, but I bought some of it off 289.
The, well, I don't know how that was ripped, but they're, are you talking about concrete or are you talking about?
No, I bought some of the asphalt that was taken off that road, and you've got to go back in there and pick all them big chunks up if you're trying to build a road or driveway with it.
Well, all of ours is going to be, will be milled up with a milling machine, which is.
Yeah, that's ours, too.
It's a fairly small gradation, but as long as it sits in stockpile, it will bond back together and doesn't get some big chunks into it. That's one thing that's good for the road, because it will bond back together. But it is, this will be the asphalt pavement milled up and then stockpiled.
Any other questions? Alright, we entertain a motion if we're ready to do so.
Thank y'all.
I'd like to entertain a motion to let them use that piece of property, except between the months of April and July, and also include a little two-foot fence barrier, whatever you call it.
So you don't want it to be used for anything?
Right, right. Oh, excuse me, I was told March.
They start fights in March.
Okay, they start fights in March.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor that allow them to use it with the exception of the months of March through July, and that they would include a two-foot barrier around it when they are using it.
I see.
Steve.
When you say around it, y'all do know that the Frange Road won't have it?
Right.
Right.
Just making sure.
They have access to.
And when we say we won't use it through March to July, like I said, this is just a possibility site, plus the material will be there those months, we won't have activity in and out.
Right, right. Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Alright, so we got a second.
Let me be sure I understand this, they, y'all gotta be confused. They can have it there, they can store it there all year round, they just are not to come in and out during the months, March to July.
Alright, motion and a second. Alright, any questions? Alright, all in favor? Four, four, nine, yes. Thank you.
Thank y'all, and y'all can mark the areas, Steve, or we'll say how that, we'll say.
I'll meet you up there, one minute.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Kevin.
Alright, next item on the agenda is to call for the election for May 4, 2002, to elect three council seats and approve the order of the election. So.
What does it mean, approve order of election?
You have to have an order. It's an order, not order of your candidates, it's to order the election, to call the election.
Order a Big Mac.
That's just what's called.
So, no.
Alright, I got a motion.
I'll second.
Carrie seconds. All in favor?
Big words, too, now, for a little bit.
You vote for it, Jerry, since you made a motion? For, oh, for, yes. Okay. Alright, next item on the agenda is to appoint May 4, 2002, election officials, Judge Donald Gilstrath, alternate judge Marion Harper, clerk Betty Gord, say his name?
Gord.
Gord, Betty Gord. Okay, this is obviously for the election. Any questions?
I'll move.
Carrie moves. Sam seconds. All in favor? Four, four, nine, yes.
I have a telephone on the next one. It should be the fourth, I know y'all should be.
Let's see, type over there. Next item is to appoint May 4, 2002, early ballot board election officials, again, Judge Donald Gilstrath, alternate judge Marion Harper, and clerk Betty Gord.
I'll move.
Carrie moves. I have a second. Sam seconds. All in favor? Four, four, nine, yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is to set the hourly wage of election workers, you have a.
It's on the right here.
A sheet in your, somewhere in here, in your packet.
It's right here.
Oh, okay. Alright, you can see there, the election workers' hourly wages, with the last legislative session, the, until the last legislative session, there was a maximum, you could pay them. Now, you can increase the rates, you can see there, Dan has put what Sherman Dussin in Grayson County is doing, the House School Board is considering an increase, and you can see what's there. So, we need to discuss what the rate will be for the workers. Any discussion, any comments?
Are these just the three workers that we're paying, Tanner?
Yes.
With the judge?
Yes.
So it'll be these three, and we budget $650 for this election?
For the entire election.
Okay.
And it should still come in under that or very close to.
I agree, we set the hourly wage for election workers at $7 an hour.
I'll second.
Are we going to also consider, in past years, they have not considered the compensation for the election judge, which you could do and you still can do, they have to pick up all their information the day before, stay with it after the election, until we're there to pick it up and bring it back, and they're entitled to a flat rate as election judge of $25. If that's something y'all want to consider.
I'll add that to my motion. Put eighty election judges and $25, and set the hourly rate at $7 an hour.
Did anybody get that? Motion, judge, election judge, the $25 compensation plus the $7 an hour. Diane made a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Carrie seconds. All in favor? Four, four, nine, yes. Alright, next item is to consider resolution, 02001, a resolution by the City of Howell, Texas, in support of the Howell Lodge, number 430, in its application for exemption from the ad valorem taxation. Mr. Purvey's here, if y'all have any questions or want to ask, if there's anything to discuss.
Is this a new, is this a new thing? Has this always been?
Actually, the Masonic Lodge has always been tax exempt for 160 years, ever since the first lodge was formed in Houston. And a few years ago, someone out in Amarillo got that lodge on the tax road, and it just snowballed, and finally they started taxing all the lodges, even though we were a nonprofit charitable organization. Somehow we got passed over when they made the American Legion, Amets, all those places, tax exempt, we got passed over. So, Grand Lodge presented to state lawmakers with all of the proof that they needed to prove that we were in fact a nonprofit charitable organization, that we gave in excess of $1.5 a day in charity within the state, within the United States, and that we support the Masonic Home and School, totally with no help from the state or the federal government, it's a fully accredited school, could give kids 12 years of education due or unfortunate outcomes to our parents, and then we send them to college. Also, we fully support the Scottish Rite Children's Hospital, Burn Center. But anyway, to make a long story short, the House passed House Bill 1689, that said that cities had the choice of giving us the tax exempt status, along with other charitable organizations, or they could give it to nobody. So, we're here to ask for that. And the school granted us that request last week, and I noticed that Sherman and then Austin also passed it, granted. So, this is going, the state gave the Grand Lodge this wording on this resolution that we brought to you, with instruction to send this all out to every lodge within the state, which is about 1,200 or something lodges. Anyway, they're going to deal with this all at one time, so we have to have all this stuff turned in, and then a lawmaker will deal with it just in one sitting, so it's kind of it.
Can I make a motion, we accept this resolution or pass this resolution?
Okay, Sam makes the motion, you'll have a second. Carrie seconds. All in favor? Four, four, nine, yes.
I can take this time, sir, thank you all. And hopefully we'll be able to get back into this charitable mode that we've been in for all those years. You know, Sam was probably on the council, maybe when we launched the air conditioning for the SNAP Center, and then the tax people started getting all our money, so we weren't able to help, but maybe we'll get back there where we can do this again, and we thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you all. Alright, the next item on the agenda is to consider appointment of Jeremy Monroe to House Police Reserves. Chief, would you like to address this?
Yeah, Jeremy worked for Dusty Miller over at Tom Bean, when Dusty left there as chief, he came over to work, and he worked for Dusty for about a year and a half, almost two years over there, and there's been some number of changes over there that have taken place, and all their good people have left, and they're looking for places to go, and Jeremy would be a good place for us to go, and I want to put him on board as a reserve. He worked by himself, he worked over by himself, he does a good job, and we could use him.
Is there a limit on the number of reserves?
Eight.
Eight?
How many do we have active right now?
Two.
Two. Is he currently working anywhere else?
But he has a regular job, you know, he's, I think he's working for a plumbing company in Dent's or Sherman.
So he's not currently with another police?
No, he's already left over there, so I'm, we're picking him up to work over here.
He was reserved over at Tom Bean, too?
Yeah, he worked over, it was almost about a year and a half to two years, he worked for Dusty, that little town. Dusty knows him real well, he comes highly recommended by Dusty.
So we put another officer on, and then, would he ride with another officer, or would he be?
Well, he'd be riding, he'll ride with another officer for a little while, yeah. Most of our people do, until they get used to what we do, and they like to see what they can do, what they can't do.
Any other questions?
Can I make a motion, we accept that?
Sam makes a motion, we accept.
I'll second.
Carrie seconds. All in favor? Four, four, nine, yes. Alright, the next item is to consider pre-employment and employee drug enforcement policy. It's over here, too. It's on this little information sheet you have. You can see there, they're currently revising personnel manual, and this was part of the policy to implement. Got any comments, anything?
What's our current policy?
None.
At present, we are not doing any. He said that, when I talked to Ron Moore about it, he said that basically we just need a guideline from the council, do we want to do, let it all, pre-employment only, or reasonable policy. He said randoms would be very difficult for us because.
Reasonable policy would be one like if a guy's digging and rips up a sewer line or something like that, that, or rip up a gas line, I know a long story. That is, if you're digging and rip out a line, they maybe take you up, they did.
That could just be metal.
Atlanta work, they have a reg, they, they're off three days, and they have to do it.
Yeah, right.
They did say whatever you choose to do, you need to consider expenses involved, because whatever is said, you need to start knowing. If you want to continue with none, you can continue with none, if you want to do it as a condition of employment, you can do it as a condition of employment. One of the ones, one of the policies that I received when I was talking to him about it from another city, they do it as a condition of pre-employment, and it would just refuse. If they're offered the position, you know, when that is part of it, and they refuse, and they're not eligible to be considered employment for another full year, and then it would be a full year with passing the test. So, it's just, it's up to y'all, and we need some kind of guidance before we go with it.
Why would it be a year?
That was just the standard that that particular city chose.
Oh, okay, so it was, it was an option to take.
Right, if they refuse to take it as a.
You know, some people just do stuff like this, they, on a matter of principle.
Right.
Of course, we always assume if they don't do it, they're guilty.
But however it's set up, we need to start implementing it.
Well, what is the cost of each drug test?
Yeah, I do want that.
It's probably going around, I'm going to figure about how.
I think so, it's, I know, of course, what we do is different, we have a contract with a drug company at the store, it's pretty expensive.
So, we're, you know, we're basically, how many employees we have a year?
New.
Are we be?
Well, I'll be.
That's right.
I'll be, if we have a good year.
But, you know, we may hire one person a year, maybe.
Maybe, there might be some year that I hire you.
That's right, and so.
But it's probably something that.
It's not going to affect our budget, is it?
No. There's probably something that needs to be considered when the budget comes around, whether we, anybody not.
If you're doing it as a condition of pre-employment, let's say it does run $100 to $150, you know, we hire a couple of employees, if that little amount of money is affecting the budget, we're already, you know, we're pretty tied at that point, if that, yeah.
Well, on the business of that problem, probable cause, reasonable cause?
I'm pretty sure reasonable cause is a word, but I'm not sure if reasonable cause is one of the jobs. That's exactly what he said, that's exactly what he said.
Well, I mean, are you going to define reasonable cause? Is that just a phrase out there?
His concern on reasonable cause was, you know, was exactly the same. If there is reasonable cause to test, there has probably been reasonable cause to discipline or terminate at that point. You know, why would you do that?
Doesn't still doesn't tell me what reasonable is.
Well, I guess you would have to decide that.
Well, I mean...
That's too... Termination.
But, I mean, is it flexible?
Oh, well, I don't know why, don't it? But it doesn't, I personally think pre-employment would be the easiest to implement and adhere to.
Let me make like a pre-employment...
So, if there's reasonable cause to drug tests, there's probably reasonable causes to dismiss?
That's, yes, that's the one that was advised.
You know, we're going to nail it down here, try to. Because we sometimes don't communicate. See, I'm an old guy and I have to have things spelled out for me.
I'm trying to spell it out.
Okay, I just, you guys snicker when that's the answer, what reasonable cause.
My recommendation is pre-employment testing only. Do we have to have a motion or just do opinions or?
Yeah, I have to have a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
All right, Jerry's made the motion that we have pre-employment drug testing policy.
I'll second.
Including?
I understand that.
You reasonably second that?
Not reasonably, no, I definitely second that.
So, does that mean you're definitely seconding it?
I'm definitely going for pre-employed.
All right, we have a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Four, four, nine, yes. Okay. All right, we're on public hearing. Ordinance number 541, designating the intersection of Pioneer Valley Drive and FM 902 West as a stop intersection in the city of Howe in the setting of a penalty for violation of this ordinance. Anybody?
Nature story?
All right. We'll end public hearing then. Move on to ordinance number 541, again, designating the intersection of Pioneer Valley Drive and FM 902 West as a stop intersection in the city of Howe in the setting of a penalty for violation of this ordinance.
I still don't agree about this ordinance.
Diane moves. Jerry, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Four, four, nine, yes. So, we want to take the motion to... Let's see if we come out, after we come out of the executive session.
I don't figure he's...
You know?
Can you tell me if I try to sell? If it were the boss now, he was still here. And if he's on his way, we can hear war.
Okay. We're going to move into the executive session. The city of Howe will convene a closed session pursuant to the provisions of Overmeetings Law, Chapter 551 Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, code annotated in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551.074 Personnel. And this will be the evaluation of job performance and compensation of the city of the administration.
Please, out of his way if you want. He said he had just passed 1417. If we want to go here and hear the item for boy when he gets here? He'll be here five minutes.
That's up to the council, y'all will take a break.
I can give you five minutes worth real quick if you'd like to listen to me.
Well, you're having to repeat him in marketing season.
No, this is not, this is not, this is for something else. I talked to Carrie about it the other day. On March 20th, 1903, the city of Howe had a house city marshal that was killed here. His name was Albert Jordan. He's buried at the Hall Cemetery out here. A researcher for the Dallas County Sheriff's Office has done some research on that, which I've got a big packet of in my office now. I told Carrie about it, that we're going to let her have it for a museum. But the important part of this thing is that Albert Jordan will be inducted into the National Law Enforcement Memorial in March of next year. The city will receive an invitation to send a representative for this appointment. Also, he's being inducted into the Texas Memorial Law Enforcement Memorial there the same week, later in the week, when they open that one up in Austin. And will receive an invitation for that one there too. So, just thought y'all might know that. I've got paper clippings and all that kind of stuff on this thing. He's the one and only person, law enforcement officer, that's been killed here in Howe since the starting of our city here. That was in 1903. Sixteen law enforcement officers killed in Grayson County from about 1875 up to Juneau Mans when he was killed here not long ago, back last year.
Have you looked in the minute book? He was hired in December to help with Christmas and the holidays and a salary of a dollar per day and 50 cents extra for ever a rest.
Yeah. It's amazing, isn't it?
That's a quarter system.
Yeah, I think so. Y'all think you may have gotten rich.
I don't know.
Okay, that was December 1902. March 24th, 1903, they called a special meeting of the city council to discuss paying his funeral bill. And he was a deputy marshal. And he is the only Jordan buried at Hall Cemetery.
Oh, okay.
But I'm going to ask Judge Vaughn to help us out on that and see if he can find some wrongdoing. So, he wasn't on duty very long.
Uh, yeah, he was 22 years old.
Does it tell in the clipping how he was killed?
Yes, he was killed by a guy by the name of Jim Black on Main Street out here. He was drunk and disorderly and I think he was waving a pistol around. And there was, there was three of them that were out there drunk. And they were all, I think they were all tried to murder and were all convicted. I've got the court records, the old court records from the courthouse over on my desk in my office.
Well, in these minutes, it says that there was a, that one of them was to draft a suitable resolution to be given to the publishers of newspapers.
But we will, we will, we'll be receiving an invitation from Washington DC in about March of next year to send a representative or whatever when they induct him into the law enforcement memorial there.
We don't know if the guy, you said, don't know if there's any relatives?
We don't know.
Yeah. That's what, that's what they were asking me, that the ones that were doing the research, if we knew of any relatives that they could invite. And they haven't been able to find any relatives, so...
And he was 22 years old.
22 years old.
Now, there was a sheriff, M.A., M.A.Y.
Yeah.
He was killed near Howe.
Yeah, near Howe. And there was, there was one, one that was killed in 1879 in Bells in front of some, the El Dorado Slum or something like that. And then there was another one that was killed on Skeety Street in Denton. And then...
Well, at one time, Howe had three sons.
It did? Where were they at? Do we know? They were just here? There was like five or six elected justices of peace or constables that were killed in Grayson County during that period of time too. Those number of people.
You going to wait?
Is he driving a reliable truck?
I really didn't ask.
Reasonable.
Reasonably reliable. Reasonably reliable.
He assured me he was not stopping and jacking the box for him. So, he would be here soon. He said, I'm at the corner and I'm going to drive through, so I'll be here shortly.
Who was researching that? Who was researching?
Uh, the guy's name is Terry Baxter. He's a retired Dallas County Sheriff's Officer. And him and his wife, basically, that's what he does for retirement. He doesn't charge anybody for anything. He's gone back through all the old records for years and years and years in Texas and has researched a lot of this stuff for officers that were killed in the line of duty and to make sure that Texas peace officer got inducted into the National Memorial in Washington DC number one in Austin when they do that one. And he does it on his own. He doesn't charge anybody for it. He refuses to take anybody for it. So, it's just something him and his wife do. They travel and research a lot of this stuff.
Have they, have they, they've not finished the one in Austin, have they?
No, no, no. That's, everything will be finished up during National Law Enforcement Memorial Week next year. And that's when, that's when all these people will be inducted into these, into these different memorials.
Where's that going to be located in Austin?
Uh, I don't really care. Just know it's in Austin. It looks in Worthington DC there.
Sorry about that.
Get us a little break.
We've been getting history lessons.
Yeah, we've got a little... Okay, now we need to go back and consider the new hiring grant. This is under your business. Consider a new hiring grant for 2002. And Chief Casey will address this concerning that. Say what you will.
Our grant right now that we currently have runs out May the first. That's the one we had when I first came here, the three-year grant. Seventy-five percent of the city picking up 25% of it, the federal government picking up the other 75% of it. It seems like it's worked real well for us. It's give us a new officer to put on the street, give us 24-hour day, Sunday week coverage. That grant is fixing to run out May the first. The federal government has allocated $139 million, or excuse me, $139 million for law enforcement grants, different kinds of grants for different areas. Very line, if we want it to take up again, it's the same, maybe it'll be the same grant. Be the same breakdown, 75, 25. It'll be a three-year grant. We have to keep the person for one year for one budget cycle here. This, this grant here will be what it actually costs us will be... Yeah, the grant will start out at $9 an hour for the first six months and it'll run up to $10.64 at the end of the grant. It's a three-year grant. Our portion of it, the city match for the first year is $4,700. Second year is $7,200. Third year is $10,262. It's not, it's a little bit higher than the other, but in fact, the salaries have gone up a little bit. So, naturally, it's going to be a little higher. Basically, what this will do for us is let the federal government give us back some of our tax dollars. It'll allow us to put another officer on a power shift at night, which is a pretty busy shift, especially on the Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, Sunday nights, that kind of stuff. Also, something else that'll help us do too is reduce the amount of comp time that we have to pay out part-time money. Right now, we're basically $6,500 a year and that is not, that's nowhere near enough for part-time people. Because you figure, you know, you figure two weeks, usually two weeks vacation. Once they've been here for a while, you have two weeks vacation to take care of. You've got 80 hours worth of comp time to try to keep off their books. See, also, if you have somebody with, that's unextended sick, you've had your budget shot. We have been real lucky. We haven't had anybody go out here and bust a knee or break a leg or, you know, break a back or whatever. But that's, you know, that's always, that's always that possibility sitting there looming at you because of the fact that what police officers do for a living. So, what I did was I just, I worked up the money on this thing that the grant pays for all the FICA. It pays for all the health insurance. We built, we built in each year an additional 10% increase in insurance every year for three years anyway because the grant's going to pay for it, whether, whether it's there or not. That's sick leave, that's retirement, workers' comp, unemployment insurance. All that's figured in the grant. So, basically, what we do is we pay 40, we end up using $4,700 of city money for first year, $7,200 the second year, and $10,000 the third year. Now, the money has not been released yet. I talked to them the other day and they said it would probably be released sometime right at the end of March to be allocated. It's a first come, first served. So, the person who gets their stuff in first is assured of getting the grant first. So, I thought I'd put it to you, let you see it, let you look at it, decide what you want to do with it. I think y'all have the figures from when I gave it to you a while back.
How many, how many police officers do we have right now?
We have five. We have five full-time, one part-time. That's all, that's including me, that's five full-time and one part-time. The problem is reserves anymore.
Two reserves.
Yeah.
Kind of the one that we just talked about the night.
Problem is, you can't even, I mean, it's nice that you have the reserves. It's nice that they put in time. But they're, they, most of them have their own set jobs that, okay, I can only work this time or I can only work that time. And that's, that's what hurts you on reserves. I try not, I try not to figure reserves in. To me, they're, they're an extra that if you've got some good ones, you're lucky. But I try not, I try not to figure them into the fact that, well, I'm going to use them for 20 hours this month or 10 hours because you can't really rely on that fact. I mean, most of them put in at least a couple of days a month, which is what I require them anyway. Some of them anymore. For fact, one of the ones that we, we had there for a while, Greg, you know, his, his job that he had allowed him to work just about anything he wanted to work. So, he was putting in, you know, 30, 40 hours a month, which was nice. But we had to hire one of our grants, so now he works for us full-time. So, we don't have anybody like that anymore.
Do we have, what kind of coverage do we have?
We have 24 days, seven days we cover. Oh, yeah.
Now?
Oh, yeah.
Now, without this grant?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We have 24 days, seven days we cover without this, without this grant, y'all have considered that, yeah.
Without a new, additional?
Yeah, without a new additional grant, yeah.
Is that, is that workable? I mean, is that being, is that workable?
Well, it's workable, but the only thing is, you know, to keep the comp time down and vacation time, it helps if you got somebody that's actually working that you can say, okay, instead of working nights, now you're going to work three days for this guy here because he's going to be gone on comp time or he's going to be gone on vacation. Or this guy over here is going to be gone on vacation or comp time. Or this guy broke his leg for six weeks.
The alternative of comp time or a comp time would be send somebody off and maybe we'd have the coverage during that day period.
To me, that's not an option.
Well, I mean...
Well, yeah, I know what you're saying, but...
It might not be an option, but that's certainly a...
Yeah, well, that's, that's the alternative, yeah. That's pretty much the alternative. That's, that's pretty much the alternative.
So, and if they don't take the comp time, we have to pay them? At a certain point in time?
Eighty hours, eighty hours.
Everything over?
They're allowed to accumulate eighty hours. I try to keep them down as much as I can, but sometimes it just does not work that way, you know, because...
At some point in time, we're reliable for that eighty hours.
If they quit and leave.
Oh, oh, oh. So at the end of the year?
They could carry it.
They could carry it over.
I think uh...
They'd keep up, they'd keep up the eighty hours on the book.
How many, how many do we have? Eighty hours.
Uh, I think I looked the other day, John, I think John has like sixty-one hours and everybody else is kinda...
I don't think anybody's at the eighty hour.
Yeah, there's nobody at the eighty hour. Uh, John's like sixty-one hours or so, everybody else is at like the forty hour, forty-five hour, fifty hour mark. Now, I don't, I don't get comp time, but I, I, I do, I, I put myself on salary. That way I don't get comp time, I don't worry about it, I just do my thing, you know? So I don't have to worry about it, so that would turn, y'all don't have to worry about it. So that's the reason why I just have myself on salary and just, just go back like that, so...
So with, excuse me, with the five, um, do you have any double coverage shifts right now that you're currently working?
Uh, on days we do, because John does all our investigations. He handles all our investigations, he, he does work some at nights whenever he needs to contact or plaintiffs or witnesses or suspects or whatever, that kind of stuff. So he does that, and John teaches at the school for us, you know, the, the, the schools are always calling wanting to come up and teach in their government classes and uh, law enforcement stuff and that kind of stuff. So he does that for us and takes care of that. And the daycare's call sometimes, they want some of the little law enforcement something, you know, to make a presentation to the, to the kids, and John takes care of that for us, so... As far as actually night coverage, no we don't, but I come in at four o'clock in the morning, usually every morning. And uh, usually my normal hours are, for me, are twenty to four-thirty and about three o'clock in the evening. I'm usually here like four, four-thirty every morning, pretty much. So I'm in here early in the morning, earlier than I'm present, but I kinda help the night side, but I wouldn't have to. It's uh, there's no actual double coverage in the, I, I call it the prime hours, which means your evening hours for most of your assault state plays, most of your family fights. Uh, something from about six to two, or seven to four in the morning when the drunks are out and the DWI's are flying down the road at ninety miles an hour and that kind of stuff, so...
So the officers are currently working five days right now?
Yes, we're working eight-hour shifts.
So really, uh, the, uh, the one we had on the grant, he's, he's in the last year.
Yeah, he's in the last couple of months, actually, May the first.
So, so we would, we would, we would, the next budget cycle, we'd pick up that little salary of his, but...
Yeah, it's already, it's already been lifted and everything.
Did we, when we got that, that other grant, did we have a five-day-a-week or seven-day-a-week, twenty-four-hour to be given, that was, that helped?
Oh yeah, that, that definitely gave us, again, uh, that definitely gave us, uh, we're already set there with coverage.
So essentially, we have the, all five people on one part-time in the budget right now.
Oh yeah.
Uh, I guess, because that last year, we, we would have to pick up a number of... Well, we have to pick up, we'd have to pick up about twenty-two thousand this year.
What happens, what happened on that deal? And the reason why it happened is when we first got our grant, started out with, when you get a grant, when it's awarded, that's when, that's when the clock starts to click the tick. Whether you take the money or not, that's when your grants start. We waited until October the first. So there's six months and there are money that we didn't get. See, we waited until October the first, we'll start our grant, and we lost out on six months worth of money. Now, what they do is, let's say for instance, we turn in for a grant. They, they award us the grant, they send me the letter, say the grant has been awarded. Uh, then they go ahead and they say on the grant, if you wish to go ahead and start doing your hiring, you can do that. Uh, we will send you the final paperwork on it within X number of period of time. Then we will reimburse you for anything that you had to spend out, in order that you can draft the money right off the top and go ahead and put the personal work immediately. Uh, we didn't let them do that last time, we waited till October, which was almost six months down the road. So we lost out on the money you're talking about, that's why we ended up funding so much over at the end.
But I, but, but what I'm saying is, the end, this year, the third year, the federal, well, it wouldn't be for this grant, but for instance, if the monies were the same, they would, the uh, the federal government would be giving us about twenty-two thousand, right?
Yeah.
And we would, we would have been spending ten thousand. But then the next budget year, we gotta pick up the whole thirty-one, eighty, thirty-two thousand. So in other words, our, with the, with the, with the person we hired from the other grant, our, our budget's gotta increase at least uh, twenty-two thousand.
That's gotta increase for a while.
Because, because we were already paying that ten thousand.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, the uh...
I was just, I was just looking at what the increase in the budget would be.
What we would have to do on October first is budget forty-seven hundred dollars. That's why, that's what it costs.
Oh yeah, but with the new one.
Yeah, with the new, yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking about the one we've got now.
Talking about the old one?
Yeah, the old one, it's, see, that, that, that's gonna be twenty-two thousand or whatever that last...
Whatever his current rate paid.
Yeah, the current rate paid. Uh, we would, we would increase our budget by twenty-two thousand from the last guy, plus the four.
Plus the four, five thousand.
See, also you have, so also you need to look at this too. The sixty-five hundred dollars that we spend for part-time will reduce back to, because you're gonna be using it. I mean, he's still in place, he's still in a position. So, yeah, that will, that's gonna take your, a pretty fair hunk of the first year of the city's portion of money anyway. And actually, the second year is gonna take a pretty fair amount of it. It's gonna jump a little bit more, but still though, it's gonna help, it's still, it will still help off, help off the standard.
Well, I, I think we, I think we need to, need to look also at the fact that obviously there's houses going up, the, the, uh, the population's growing. Uh, obviously, activity is increasing on the highway. Uh, so you, I, we, we might even need to look at, hey, we need to keep, we need to keep abreast of, of the increased police activity that's gonna...
Well, I think, I think with this grant, I personally think that this will get us set for a long time down the road, we won't have to worry about it for a long, long time. And we can let the federal government figure out a good hunk of the tab. We left it at seventy-five percent.
Yeah, we never get anything for free, though.
Well, yeah, but, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's money that our citizens spend for taxes and...
I'd rather us...
It's something back to them, so...
I'd rather not send it to them myself.
Yeah, me too, but, you know, so...
So I, you know, I think we're in a quandary really, as to whether or not we wanna bite off that, knowing that we're gonna have to do something in the future, but then going to...
Well, this, this, this is the gradual way of doing it. You know, the first year, you're looking at forty-six, forty-seven hundred dollars. Second year, you move up a little bit more, and the third year, you move up a little more, so...
So we're, we're, we, if we don't take advantage of this, what would be, if they do it again, we'd be three more years. Or if they do this ever again?
It's, it's hard to say, because they sign, they sign up, they, you know, they sign these bills into law to refund these things every so many years. And uh, if you don't get in on them, when they first come out, you know, it's, it's one of the kind of deals that you're just probably not gonna get it. Because everybody's got, everybody's looking over that, you know, everybody's looking, they're looking at that big pie down there, and they're saying, well, maybe I can get me a quick hunk of it right off the bat, you know? And everybody jumps out there and the people who get their stuff in first and they have it right and have it done correctly, they're the ones, they're the ones that get allocated the money first. And after that, it's whatever piddling amounts left over. So, and this is actually the year they funded a lot less, I think, than they have in the years past, or... They, they've moved a lot of it towards resource officer grants, school grants. And uh, I had talked to Mr. Sears, or actually, he came to talk to me, it's been a while back, and what the availability of a resource officer grant is. They're, they're hard to administer. They're not that hard to get, but you're real limited what you can do with them. Basically, it's, they work at the school, they don't work nowhere else. And that's, you know, that's pretty much about what happened with them, so... And that's a lot of what, what a lot of this money's going for nowadays from the federal government, these grants is these, these offer, uh, resource officer grants, so... By us having one grant already, fulfilling it, we will prove, we'll be assured that we will get this grant. That's usually, usually what happens. Cause we did our original paperwork, we put in there that we were looking at possibly another grant officer, maybe two thousand, two thousand and one, or two thousand somewhere along in there, when this ran out. So, that's, that's how they hit the budgeting on them, is by what the different departments put down.
Were your intentions to put this officer on a power shift type deal?
Yeah, I wanna put him on a power...
You end up with three people during the day?
Huh?
You end up with three people during the day?
On a power shift.
Okay.
Uh, something like a six to, well, actually, I'd even thought about a ten-hour shift at night. You know, something like six to four, five, or five, four to, four to two or something like that. And it'd be on the busy days of the week, it'd be like a Thursday, a Friday, Saturday, uh, probably Sunday. I'd even thought about a twelve-hour shift at night on, on the busy nights of the week. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of variables there that you can use on this thing. You can use about eight hours of shift at night, twelve hours, ten hours. You know, if you've got a specific problem and you wanna work, you know, let's say you're having tedious DWI's at four o'clock in the morning on the highway, you say, okay, your hours are four o'clock in the morning. Or if you're having a burglary problem, at certain hours in the day or night, or whatever, you can put them on that. But what I like about it is the fact that it will help reduce a lot of the comp time that we're given and we're having to figure out a way to get these people off of them. That's what, that's, that's, that's a lot of us killing us. And I, and I realize that the comp time, we have to give these people something. You know, the other alternative, we could go back and allocate a bunch of money for, you know, for overtime, so...
Uh, it, it, the, the grant is, uh, is, is directed specifically toward a person with a name, right? I mean, that you finally hire.
Uh, it, it's just, the grant is, is allocated as a position.
A position?
You know, no matter whose name is in it, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, well, I was thinking that, you know, you, you've lost some officers, they go on to other, other places. And if you hired that one officer to fulfill that grant, you know, as part of that grant, and then he says, well, hey, I gotta get a better job at, I think, last, uh, one time, Wiley, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, uh, you just put another guy in his place, in his position?
Well, I know, I hire, I don't, I don't, I don't move my people down to a grant position.
Okay, it's just a position?
It's a position, it doesn't even have to have a name on it, I mean, you just have to have somebody fill it in. So what you do is, like, well, let me, let me kinda explain what we've been doing with them. We have a grant position, we have one officer in grant position, one of our regular off, one of our, I call them our regular officers quit. Uh, Shane quit and went off to Wiley or wherever he went to. So what I do is I, I offer the grant position officer, I say, look, you, you, you're gonna work in this grant, the pay's a little lower, you know, I'm gonna move you to the regular position on a regular pay scale. Move him over. Then I hire somebody for the grant position. And it is an incentive, it's, it's a way of getting these people in here, that I realize that the grant pay is a little lower than what your regular city pay is. Uh, but it, it gives them an incentive to come to the job, to work it, and then move over if somebody, somebody other person is our release, or if one of the reserves decides that they wanna go full-time, and we have this grant position open.
It's basically on the entry level?
Yeah, pretty much so, yeah.
So are they brought in with the knowledge that they will, they have to stay with the city for four years to...
That's what he's saying.
To hold this position?
That's what he's saying, it doesn't matter if they stay or not, he just goes out and hires another person.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's just like anything, it's just like anything.
But to me, it seems like we're wasting a little bit of money there if we're training them for two years and they go find another position that pays for them.
They do it every day?
Yes.
You know, Austin, Austin left, he's, he, he's a Melissa. He's probably fixing to go to Collin County making five thousand more dollars a year than what he was in Melissa. He's already pretty much been hired there. Shane left. He went for more money. Uh, Arivern left and went for more money.
That's what's gonna happen.
Well, yeah, you can't, you can't stop that.
I mean, I mean, Wiley and, and some of these towns, they're growing in, in...
Well, the big, the biggest problem that a lot of departments get into, I just call it failure to train. You know, you give these people all the training you can give them, granted, you're gonna spend money for it. And I've got a lot of different sources that I get this training, I send them to Dallas Police Academy, because I know people down there, and they let me send my people down there for nothing. DPS trains them for nothing for us, because I, you know, I've got some grants working with them, but they give us free training for nothing. So that saves us a lot of money there, so...
So how many hours is this officer in training before they would be on duty by themselves?
Well, I'm like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even be hiring anybody that didn't have any training to start out with. I, I just can't do it.
Well, but you're not gonna put them cold in a house, police car, you're, you're in a money...
They'll come in here and they'll work with me, or they'll work with John, or I'll put them with somebody. Actually, I'll probably put them in a two-man, a two-man car at night for, for a couple of weeks to see how they do, make sure that they understand how we do things here, how our reports are done. And then, uh, and actually, it, actually, it's pretty, it's a pretty decent deal, because if you put him in a car out there by himself, he's still with somebody, cause you got two people working. He's working with somebody off of each shift, off of the evening shift and off the late-night shift. So there's that overlapping working between two shifts, two type deals, so...
You're always gonna have the problem, and I don't think you can fail to, I mean, you can't not train. I mean, you've got, even though you know they're gonna leave one of these days. And you might have a guy that just loves a small town and...
Well, yeah, that's, you know...
That's fine, too.
We've been, uh, we've been real fortunate here, we've, I've been able to hire some real good people. Granted, some of them go to another place for a lot more money, but, you know, we've been, we've been real fortunate, so... And I hope to continue that, to be unfortunate to be able to hire people that are, that are good people for us.
So you're really, you know, this next, next budget cycle, you really are gonna, if you don't, if we don't go for this grant, we're gonna have to come up with about twenty thousand dollars extra in, in salary for the police department, because, because of the grant we just, we're currently in, right?
The one that ends up in May?
Well, no, 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 that's right, but what I'm saying is that the person that's currently on the grant...
Right, is up in May.
If we, if we, up in May, if we use these salaries here, you've got this allocation. Twenty thousand dollars will not be covered by the, the federal government, we gotta pick that up. So that's a, that's an increase in our, it's an increase in our budget.
When we do a, when we do a whole, complete, brand-new budget, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, 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 when we do a whole brand-new, we're gonna increase that budget by at least twenty thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand dollars, whatever. Uh, if we do the grant, that next, next budget cycle, we'll have to add another five thousand dollars to it because of...
The new grant.
The new grant. You see what I'm saying? So we're, we're talking about twenty-seven thousand, thirty thousand, whatever. Additional in the budget.
The next budget cycle?
The next budget, well, if you start with another grant, then the next year, you're gonna pick up another two thousand dollars. And it just keeps going until...
Goes up like about two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
It starts at about, what, I'd say forty-six, then about two thousand, or any about two thousand, so...
But what I, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, we don't do anything, don't go in for another grant, the budget's still gonna increase, this next budget's still gonna increase by twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars.
Exactly.
If we do something, it's gonna increase...
Another forty-seven, whatever it is.
Then we, but we got another man, and then we're, then we could be in a position to, you know, for, for increase. And, and we know we're growing, I mean, we know there's more activity coming in to how. Hopefully, we'll get business in here, so get some tax revenue, too. I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing it out, not, not to say, hey, let's do it, I'm just saying, no matter what we do, we've got an increase this next year.
Right, exactly.
Because of the previous grant. And uh, we're just gonna, then we're gonna obligate ourselves for another three years.
Well, I don't know, I think the real question is doing another officer. And if, and within the next three years, uh, if we do, then it's prudent, if it's not... If it's not, maybe not.
And then you'd have to ask the question, are we gonna grow? If we're gonna grow, obviously, there's gotta be more coverage. I think it's obvious to me.
And you need, and you need to look at, at the fact that you're looking three years down the road too. The growth being three years. Anybody else? Any other discussion, questions, comments?
You asked the question, Mark, do you have an answer? Do we need, or do you have a, you have a feeling?
Well, I mean, I think Chief B. Stelz, does he need another officer? And over the next three years, based upon the growth that we foresee, does he need another officer? And I assume by his petition here, that he believes, I mean, we're not here just to try to get grants, and that's not the reason, cause it does cost us to some level. And, uh, as, as we see from the previous one, we got, we got twenty-two, we're gonna have to, and, you know... But if we need that person, then we need, then we need to hire them. And a grant is a good way to defray the cost, at least for the three years, it sure is.
You, you, you feel like that we probably do need another officer?
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to see, I have a real problem with two, two, uh, one person working by themselves at night. You know, we, you know, we're getting guns on people, we're getting dope, you know, we're, we've, we've had a standoff in this town. Well, man with a gun, right out here on Naddle too. I didn't hear that. But, uh, yeah, I think we do, yeah, I think we need some, we need a bunch of solid double coverage at night. And I, and I personally think that it would help us a lot with our comp time problem. Uh, for fact, I think we probably just almost eliminated. And like I say, we're...
Yeah, it'll be the day.
I'm trying, I really am.
No, I mean, I just mean, it's a factor of life.
It's, it's nature of police work. You know, it's hard to just pull somebody, say, whoop, stop right there, go home, and we'll let somebody else come in and start with the middle where you're at. But, you know, we're, we're budgeting sixty-five hundred dollars right now anyway for, for a part-time person. So you, you look at it this way, uh, do we get a grant for forty-seven hundred dollars for the first year, or do we up the part-time money by another four, five thousand dollars?
So there's your, there's your grant.
That's an alternative. I mean, but, you know, so, so what, so what do you do? You know, we got this comp time to contend with, we got vacation, we got sick time, and you know, we've never really planned for any extensive sick time if somebody got hurt. We've been real fortunate. And I've seen some departments where people get busted legs, busted knees, you know, and they're out for six weeks or whatever, and that would, that would desecrate us, something like that happens, so...
Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, do you have anything else? Anybody else got a question or thought, comment or whatever? Anybody got anything else on their mind?
A little bit.
I'm sorry. I just wanna make sure everybody's answered all the questions they wanna ask. Okay, do we wanna entertain a motion or...
Well, I think that, uh, obviously, Howe is growing, and I hate, I hate to spend money, and, you know, I just hate to spend money. But I would, I would make the motion, we, we apply for that.
Okay, I have a motion, I'm saying that we apply for this grant. Do I have a second?
Before we do that, can we, can we, can we discuss just a little bit more, I guess, as in what are, what are our thoughts? I mean, for me, I mean, I like to sleep well at night, I like to know that we've got adequate coverage at night. I mean, we're all within limits, so we're all being covered by this, and so... But, I mean, do I know if I have enough? Someone may know more about the fact that, you know, are we gonna end up getting two? And two will always be the coverage and it's adequate to what we need, or is it over and above what we need? Is anyone else, I mean, some of us are white on this here.
I think, yeah, I think it goes back to what you said a lot earlier, you know, it's gonna come down to whether or not each of us individually think that there's gonna be a need in the next two to three years for our next officer. And that's basically, I think, what it comes down to, is whether or not we think that in two to three years from now, we're gonna, you know, and I don't know how it works, but, you know, are you sitting here thinking, well, if we don't do this, and say in two years or three years, we realize we do need another officer and grants might be available, they might not be, you can take that chance and then you have to come up with the money again, some way, somehow. You know, and who knows? I mean, there's no way for us to sit here and predict that, we can't predict that, there's no what.
Well, I remember, I remember Jimmy, you know, when we, uh, when we were here and we had, had no night coverage at all, we would, we would depend on the county. You know, and as far as I know, of course, I lead a sheltered life, we did have major problems. But, you know, it's a different time, it's a different time now. Uh, when, when, when up here on Young Street, they bust somebody, the sheriff's department in the, the city, bust somebody for a check...
A major forgery check ring.
Right, and, and some drugs involved, and, uh, in, in, in fentanyl labs going on in, in the general area, in town. Uh, you know...
Well, I think, I think that...
It's a different time.
Yes, I think it's a different times, and I also think that you're gonna see an increase in the population. I know just from school standpoint, that all the schools around here have been talking, obviously, and they're looking for increase in numbers of students. So that means we're gonna have an increase in number of kids on the streets and those type things, and I mean, and I'm not just trying to single them out, I'm just trying to, to make sure that we, you know, we look at all the aspects of it, is that something that we're concerned with?
Well, that, that has got a major, major building development going on down there. I mean, both in the school and, uh, housing. It's gonna come this way, you know, they've been predicting it for twenty years now, forty years, something like that. It's coming, and it...
Try the traffic, it's probably getting here.
Oh, absolutely, and, and I, in, in, in our church work, uh, we're involved in some activities with kids, and I am amazed of what goes on with these kids. They, I, I, you know, I wonder where the parents are and what they're teaching, you know, and, and our Wednesday night activities.
And again, you know, I think, Mark has alluded to this, and, you know, the fact that it's gonna come down to the opinions of the council members, of what they believe and what they feel the future holds and all that, and that's, that's where we're at. I don't, you know, I don't know if we can sit here hash it out anymore or not. I don't know if anybody wants to make any more comments or not.
Well, I, I believe that we've built a, I mean, the jewel of, of the county school, high school. And it will hold, you know, upwards of the, the top end of the three A limit, which is eight or nine hundred. So, I think if you build it, they're gonna come, and so...
Well, you know, I, I talked to the principal, Mr. Wilson up there, you know, back when they first opened the new high school, I mean, it was like, oh, we're expecting twenty or thirty people new and enrolled from the area, and they had like eighty the first year. And then the next year, halfway through the year, they had another pile of them, you know, it's like, where are all these people coming from, you know? So...
So, based on the limited information I have, and what we've discussed here, I will second the motion.
So I have a motion, that we accept this, apply for this grant, we got a second one more. If you don't have any other comments, then all in favor? Two for, all against? Two against?
We have to sign the negative extension and start calling, we're standing.
This time? Okay, yeah, in that case, I vote that we, we approve this grant.
So the motion is for the application of the grant?
Application, excuse me, right. All right, now, let's move back, we need to get back onto the, to the, uh, agenda, and it's time to move into executive session, which I will read.